Six thirty, I will call this meeting to order. Mountain Lake Area School District, School Board. Dr. Salinas, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Excellent. Do a quick poll call. Joel.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
And myself is here. Jessica Erwin, not be here tonight. We all stand in support. I want you to secure the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. May they volunteer to read the mission statement.
I can read it. The Mount Lake Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Great, thanks, Tom. I have two agenda minutes approval. First item of business there is either approval or revision of the agenda.
I'd like to change the agenda. We move seven A and seven B up to just behind school news.
Absolutely. Seven A and B, there's action items involving Brian Johnson. Pop those in. Right after school news, does that work? For personal. Be the motion on the table.
No second.
Motion by Tom, second by Harley. Any other considerations from the group? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that will pass. Excellent. To be approval of the July 21st regular board meeting minutes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion by Joel and a second by Tom. Any discussion? All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. On to item three, addressing the board. Dr. Salinas, we have some special guests here tonight.
Sure do. Mr. McKeever's here with a double header. Yeah? Exciting times with the FFA, right? Well, come on down and tell us all about that fishing trip you guys just took recently. Picture, you're just adjusting. This is perfect. Don't hurt just fine. Thank you so much. Sorry about that.
Well, I'll start us off and then the students can take from here. My name's Jessica Arnold. I'm president of the FFA alumni and supporters from our forum. And on behalf of our over eight hundred alumni, which includes both former students, their parents, family members, as well as business supporters within the community, we just want to thank you all for your wonderful support of our programs, our teachers, and our students. And we hope to continue to see the support in the future. Welcome, take it away.
Thank you. You start off first. Okay. Yes, we went on our annual fishing trip to Canada this year. We had twenty-seven students that came along with us. So it was a pretty big group. We had a lot of fun. And then quite a few pictures of all sorts of fish that kids caught. So our way out, we actually stopped at George Dawson's house. So that's George in the middle there. Everybody shakes his hand for good luck. So we all shake his hand. We got a picture with him. And then we actually have some fish pictures, some pictures of playing cards when it's raining. I think the kids had a good time. Yeah.
Nice. You didn't fish that, did you?
No. All the way up.
We all worked for a minute.
We stopped in a waterfall way up.
We were surprisingly running early on our trip. So we were able to stop by and see this beautiful waterfall. I'd never seen a waterfall before, so this was an amazing experience for me to see. I mean, I've only seen the pictures or videos, but I've never actually seen this big one up close. So the boys had fun, the girls also had fun. We got some cute pictures out of it, too. A lot of people were asking what would happen if you wrecked it off of it? I won't mention, I know we're done doing that, but I-
Smart thing.
The trail was slightly more grassy this year, so it was a little painful to hear our trucks get scratched. Thankfully, no one got any brand-new cars or any new boats out. So we made it work, but we did have to pull out the chainsaw for a little bit, but we made it work. Thankfully, we had some strong kids on our trip this year to make it a little easier.
So this is actually in Jude Lake or is this on the way?
Yeah, no, that's actually on the lake. So it's part of the island there. And that's a picture off the point of the island. Like back, it's like way back is where we come in, so you can kind of see it in a very far distance.
I say our kitchen setup is pretty good. You survived it. Thankfully, we had some good cooks on the trip as well, so we made it. It was very rough waking up in the morning, especially for me, having that morning person. So thankfully, they told me I had kids in duty like the first morning of the week. So I was done overly bad because, or else you'll hear the pots of pans. Let me tell you, some of the first years enjoyed doing that, too. Going around camp, slaying your pans together.
Fish are biting already.
Yeah. And then two of our seniors this year, James Wettler and Kelly Deegan, made a party potty. It sounded like one of the biggest jokes about it because I actually called it that day. It's a port body, so now it's called party potty. They really, we really upgraded from a C-shaped, from a fishing channy, as you can tell, and the door works, which is great.
We got solar powered fans and all.
Oh, yeah, we're living in the dream.
Sunlight coming in.
But when it rained, unfortunately, I did get dripped up. It was so fun. And that's just what you said. We played cards. But no fish were thrown, thankfully, but-
Looks like America's Cup on the right. Everybody lining up for a sailboat race.
Have some pictures of some of the kids that caught some fish, or some big ones and small ones.
Zama and I can't remember his name. Jeremy. Jeremy. And Zama caught the bayas and others. But Jeremy was kind enough to let her get the winning money about that. So she was pretty proud of that.
I mean, that's embarrassing. You went from the ch- to this.
What time of day is this? Is this Friday at dusk or very morning?
Oh, yeah, very morning.
It's fog or smoke.
Fog.
I've been like stressing me out. I'm Googling, where are the wildfires? Here's the lake.
Unfortunately, the weather was slightly a hazard. They rained a lot while we were up there, so unfortunately, we couldn't really go out fishing that much. It did start thundering, but we made it work. Some of the main fishermen down on the trip were slightly disappointed. They didn't get to fish as much, but they would still stay out there as late as they could. But we helped, and it worked, and we all got to bond more. Everyone kind of goes on their boat, stays on the boat until we're told to come back in, so.
How late do you get light up there?
Um, we're allowed to stay out till, yeah, and then lights out.
Summer's home's this right then, right?
Yeah.
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 You caught enough to at least eat something up there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, enough for every dinner every night.
That's a good job.
You always have the local Costco, right?
Yeah. It sure is like most of your lake. There. Picture perfect.
That's the whole crew this year.
Great volunteers.
Yes.
My dad thought ago this year he was, he was in heaven, even though we didn't get to fish that much.
Where's dad in the picture?
He's over there in the yellow burger pan.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Ryan's right behind him. Orion isn't that taller than he is, but he's also, I think, standing uphill slightly.
Was that at the end or the beginning?
That was at the end. Yeah.
Well, you're gonna still-
Bin of stuff, everything was soaked. He's like, oh, it's fine. I opened it up, I was like, it's not fine. Everything was damp and sandy and damp.
Well, thank you so much for sharing those pictures. Absolutely lovely. Thank you. And where has it that you're already thinking about the next activity? Is that right?
Yes.
What's going on? What are you guys thinking next?
Uh, it's the National Convention in Indianapolis, October 29th to November 1st. So we have, I think, thirty kids right now signed up to go down there. So I said, we actually changed it, it's two years ago now. So only second, third, and fourth kid members can go, so no first-year members. So it's kind of something for them to look forward to. And then they actually have to like do things throughout the year, be active. And then, so we already have, like I said, we had that $25 knockdown deposit by June 2nd, so we could just get a head count to figure out how many rooms we needed in the bus. So we take a bus down to Indianapolis. New this year's, we're actually gonna share a bus with school from across. So they had like fifteen kids and they didn't have a bus, so I was like, we have twenty empty seats. So we're gonna share a bus with them on the way down. And then we get a hotel, so we stay in the hotel. We're not there all that often, which the kids complain about because they're, they're up early. We go to the convention, they have conferences to go to. And they have a big expo and it's like, part of it's a career expo and part of it's like a shopping mall thing that they have set up.
No. I don't really know if it's come back, but twenty more clothes. And it's a really nice time. I mean, I, we get to meet kids from all over the world, which is, well, not the world, the United States. But I love it when I get to find people with my name because it's very rare. I actually just met a girl from Alaska who had my exact name, so that's actually really cool.
I just love seeing like all the different states. Just, it's crazy to think how far they've come to just be here all together.
And we're all friendly. Like seriously, doesn't matter where you're from. Since we're all just with this huge community, you can go up to anyone and say, hi, I'm this and that, I'm from this state, and you'll learn everything about them. They're, it's just a great time. And the dancing, there's so much dancing. Hard to keep up.
We left the space for you here if you want to.
No. I'm an observer, actually.
That is fun. Now, a couple of years ago, I remember Garth Brooks was the headliner. Do we know who the headliner was?
They haven't talked about it yet.
They haven't?
No.
Would you get some?
Yeah, but you usually go to the rodeo, so we watch that one, right?
That's a lot of kids' favorite part.
Yeah.
Because they dedicate it to a Saturday member, so it's like, who doesn't like to see men get bucked off of holes? And a clown running around.
And then this year, because it comes on Halloween, we're actually looking to maybe go to like a haunted house or a haunted hayride of some sort, one of the nights.
Thank you for being so thoughtful about the costs associated with this and you guys are so well-planned, always are. Board members, we recommend that you please consider the travels to the International Conference there. Indianapolis at the end of October, please. You have a motion. I'm sorry, this is where it came from.
Me.
Okay. Thank you. Leah and Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you guys. Thank you so much. We'll see you in a few short days when we get back to school, okay?
Yeah, so fun.
You're missed. We miss you guys.
Yeah, we miss it, too. We miss you guys.
Thank you. Caleb, you have your leadership.
Thank you.
Jessica, thank you. Excellent. Students have comments. Dr. Salinas, give them some. Three D, school news.
Good evening, board members. A couple of quick hits for you here in the next couple of days. First, it is great to have our kids' voices back around campus today, being one of the first days with volleyball and football and all the kinds of things that happened throughout this week. They breathe such life into our buildings and we're very excited to have them back. We are looking forward to next Monday night, our annual meeting. That begins at 6:00 PM at the intermediate center. Tip of the hat to Scott DeYoung and our school finance team for doing such a remarkable job, turning around a lot of information in a short period of time. The annual meeting budget booklet is on the district's website. We encourage people to bring their thoughtful questions with them. We have a report from Treasurer Craven, so thank you so much for the preparations that have been undertaken in order to have what we think is another successful meeting of our community. Also want to let you know that this week, Wednesday night, I plan to attend the village meeting. This meeting is important because, among many things, they'll be talking about our school resource officer, Green. I had some preliminary conversations with Chief Barrett, as well as village administrator Nick Owen. We suspect that the village continues to value, as do we, the relationship that we continue to forge, a meaningful relationship that's been forged. I'm excited about bringing that back before the board for final approval. And then a much more grand, higher level, if you will, I wanted to just follow up some comments I made during the last report to the board, particularly as it relates to federal funding. You may have heard that the Trump administration has reversed its decision with regard to the clawback of local, excuse me, title federal funding to the states. We learned just last week that approximately seventy-five percent of the original dollars that were given to states will remain with the states now. And this is a one-year solution. So we know that the concept of law credits, of which I spoke last time, will likely be something that we'll have to consider in the 26, 27 school year. But the actual dispersment of the title dollars that we're to receive hasn't been made known specifically to us as of yet. I got a letter from the deputy state superintendent on Friday night. So once I know more, I'll share it with you. But from the public standpoint, thank you. Thank you for making your voices be known. I know many families were concerned about the clawback of after-school program and the implications it had for them and their little ones, especially if they're working and mom and dad needed to work till five, 5:30, and there was no after-school care. So those are the kinds of things where everybody kind of holds up their sleeves and we're shoulder to shoulder and we're getting an important message out. So I'll keep you posted, but we're about seventy-five cents on the dollar right now in terms of those funds. And then, oh, I can't help but mention, love to see if there's anybody out listening that'd be interested in being a bus driver or a member of our orchestra, being an orchestra teacher. In fact, if you do both, you can do both at the same time, or a music well driver. No, seriously, we do need to have some additional hands on deck with bus driving, particularly in the morning and afternoon hours. And we have about a point five-three FTE-ish for orchestra that we sure could, we sure could use. Otherwise, we're having to make some decisions with regard to our rotation of music at the fourth grade level. We have always wanted to expose our kids to music as early as possible because we see what it does once the kids get up to the level of high school. The kids are just remarkable, they're a talent, so.
President Mertz, you were mentioning something really exciting with Neighbors Helping Neighbors, right?
Yeah. Pull that up here. They do an annual school supplies track for folks who can't afford that. They're accepting donations right now from the community to help pay for it. And if anyone is interested in receiving supplies, they can reach out to Neighbors Helping Neighbors on their website, called 688-437-6114. By August 10th, distribution is on August 15th. Great program that they've had for a number of years.
To piggyback up that, the Lions Club is doing Stuff the Bus on Saturday from ten to two at Miller's, also for school supplies. And they've done that also for a long time.
You said from ten to two?
Ten to two. Luckily, I hope that I was like, oh, I don't remember the times.
Yeah.
Anyone else with any school news to report about? All right. Let's move on to item seven A, seven A and B that we are going to bump up in our rotation. Brian Johnson, you and Aaron, hopefully, have a day. First reading, you consider revision of the board policy, one lifetime educational opportunities, sexual harassment, sex-based non-discrimination in education programs or activities. It's the first reading. We don't have a president, so we're saying, pop through, consider it.
As you can probably tell, there's no reason to redline this version because it's all, it's all changed. It reverts back to the policy that was before the previous policy, but we were able to keep a lot of components in. But I want to, the first big change that you've noticed is probably the title. The title itself has changed to be equal educational opportunity. Stays the same, but it's sexual harassment and sex-based non-discrimination in educational programs or activities. Sex-based stays in because it's still on. And so that is why we continue to participate in that. Some of the other changes that are in there, and Aaron and I can kind of talk about both of it, is really the biggest substantial change, in my opinion, is the definition of harassment itself. So under the 2020 provision, it was that schools must address sexual harassment that's so severe and pervasive that it effectively denies a person's equal access to a school program or activity. It has to be all three. The new slash old provision is that sexual-based harassment has to be so severe or pervasive and that it denies or limits a person's ability to participate in a program or activity. So the other piece that we, you know, shared and saw, and that's an important piece to note, is if somebody does something that's inappropriate, it might not meet the definition of sexual harassment, but it still meets the definition of code of conduct. There's still disciplinary actions that need to come into play. And so just because it doesn't meet a Title IX definition, doesn't mean that nothing happens, right? There are other provisions and other policies that go into place. Another piece to it is off-campus harassment. One of those changes is that it used to be that it off-campus meant that it has to occur inside the U.S. and in a school or program. And it basically meant it was under the school's substantial control. So that was the definition. And the new policy gives all the same criteria, but then it's under the school's disciplinary authority. So if we don't have disciplinary authority, we can't investigate it, it's not. Another one is the complaint status. If you want to talk about that.
Yeah, the complaint status previously in the 2024 regs, that schools must address complaints only if the complainant was participating or trying to participate at the time of complaint. And our new, I remember I didn't do that right, right? Our new is at the time of the incident.
Changes, like it's just little things that go back and look a little bit different, but right there, really important. So if something, you know, this means that a student can leave and, you know, kind of go through it. So it plays it off on when it can hap- when you can, when it can actually be Title IX. And schools must respond. All of this is kind of the same. And then it changed, schools must respond to sexual harassment in a way that's not deliberately different, to schools must respond to sexual-based harassment with prompt and effective action. So it's just little details like that that just changed, just a little, just enough, right? Throughout. And then really, the process of procedures changed pretty substantially. And all of those are in great detail and in length on the document. It is multiple pages long and it has to be that.
Traditionally, board members, you may remember that we have the board policies that outline the what, and then we have administrative regulations that outline the how. We've been informed by multiple legal counsel that this should all be in one package for those who might have a complaint. That's why you see the how.
Yeah, I think again, one thing is going to emphasize, the Title IX umbrella, as complaints come up, we look at, does it fall under the Title IX? Well, if it does, under these new regulations, we deal with it according to this. If it doesn't fall under those, that umbrella, it doesn't mean we don't deal with it, but we don't have to use this legal procedure. So I think that's the important distinction that if it doesn't fall under Title IX, we use our other policies in place.
So if I'm hearing you describe it, they somewhat broadened the definition of what would qualify because it's an ant, or it's a more now, not an ant. But they have narrowed the scope of it in terms of it has to be under a disciplinary jurisdiction, meaning it has to occur under a disciplinary jurisdiction, as well as it must, the individuals involved must be under a disciplinary. That number's a graduated student could not be. A complaint could not be filed against, okay.
Really, really close. That first one is now and instead of for. It was the one.
Okay, I had it. Got it?
And it has to be under our jurisdiction.
Okay.
Can you maybe take a moment to walk the board through? If a parent says to you, I'd like to have my child separated from the student in the classroom, why that may not always happen, move the kid to a different class because of the law?
So Title IX specifically states that no disciplinary action can occur while the Title IX investigation is occurring. So if we decide to go down a Title IX route, we cannot have any disciplinary action until the whole process is over, which can take an extended period of time. What we can do is supportive measures if both parties agree. So we might be able to say like, you guys need to be separated in the hallways or separated in the classroom. And if both parties agree, it's not disciplinary, it's just, it's a supportive measure. But if one party says, no, we don't want to do that, then it becomes, then it would be disciplinary to make them do it, and we cannot do it. If we're not following Title IX and it's a code of conduct, then discipline can happen immediately, but Title IX cannot.
And our burden of proof, as I said, you've spoken, stated Treasurer Craven, the burden of proof for the police is very different. So you can have two parallel investigatory tracks going down, and what the district comes up with may have a very different response than the burden of proof prescribed by law by that police reasonable suspicion. So it's, and they may be moving faster, quite frankly, than we may be because of the requirements that they're here. Thank you for staying on top of these many moving pieces.
Yeah, thanks for the full explanation, too. And it was nice, and we had a great discussion last time around when this first was brought up, just about trying to figure out the ins and outs of this and any weaknesses in this. But I came away feeling really satisfied with our ability to still maintain control over a situation. It's just a different mechanism that we might have to use.
Right. Excellent. Any other discussion?
Thank you for that one. We can move on to seven B, considering approval of the district's annual at-risk plan.
of the district's annual Everest Plan, Brian Johnson.
Yeah, so Sarah and I kind of do the Everest programs together. We kind of both work on supporting our Everest program at all levels. And so, it's a yearly requirement that you guys approve the policy. And so, basically, the policy is in our admin reg. And so, we were able to update the admin reg. Basically, we changed some of the components of, what are some of the alternative programs that we offer for kids? So some we took out because we don't have them anymore, and some we added in. So you probably saw that call on pages, what is it, three, four? And then, the one thing that we spelled out really specifically is after those, after this chart, is alternate graduation options. So these have already been brought up to the board, but we just really spelled them out so that they were really clear, that we have two options for alternative graduation in this point. And so we just tried to be really crystal clear in what we provided and how we provided for students.
You didn't have any questions about this policy plan?
You mentioned some minor differences. I didn't really notice anything super different. Was there anything that you'd want to draw out there, Brian?
No, I just think we added the G O two at the bottom. I think that we added Richardson School to be able to view in it. We have some students who are participating there. We deleted the Leibergs. We don't want to grab that in the program. And then, do we add it? We added kind of the definition of what Common Threads does as well. So we had that we use Common Threads, but we didn't have a really good definition of it. So we added that to just make sure that people know what it is. So do you have a student, Brian, that's there as well?
Important, this is one that, this is not a policy, so we could pass this tonight if there's a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Joel. Any further discussion on it? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Excellent. Thanks for moving around the agenda here to accommodate that. Dr. Salerno, I think we're back to report on personnel transactions. Anything to call out?
Yes, board members, various, any?
And agenda, personnel transactions.
Motion.
Motion to approve personnel transactions.
I will second. Sorry, Joel. Motion by Leah, second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Onto our consent agendas. Are there anything that, anyone would like to pull out for further discussion? Otherwise, look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
We got a motion by Tom and a second by Carly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Onto our discussion items. Six A would be our summer, summer school report. Courtney, you're on.
That's me. Thanks. Thank you for letting me come and talk to you about our amazing summer school program. I'm just gonna give you a little recap from our four-week program. We had two weeks for session one, and then we have a week off during fourth of July, and then a second, two weeks for session two. So you can go. So this slide just kind of highlights some of our enrichment courses. Some, this is just a little sampling. Some are repeating, some are brand new. We had mindfulness class related, a lot of yoga and mindfulness strategies. Summer theater camp where they performed, they rehearsed and created a set and performed a play on the last day for parents and other summer school classes. Rook Squad, they learned various chess strategies, and they had a competition at the end. Movement and Ruben where they did like free dancing, which was really cute. The Trail Mix, they learned the history of some of these names. When I first saw them, I had like, I had no idea, like you're saying Trail Mix, like you're eating Trail Mix. Trail Mix, they learned about the bike trail, the history of the trail, different carts, how far it goes, when did it start, things you can eat on the trail, just really like unique things. Homegrown Science, they did various like high-interest experiments, learned about building rockets. Ukulele, this class actually performed at the beginning of the play for this theater camp, so they had a little performance as well. The slime, every time I walked into that room, it made me a little anxious because it was a big giant mess, but those kids were having an absolute ball. They left with their own slime multiple times, so it was definitely a success. And then kindergarten kickoff, this is our youngest starters that were guarding basic school routines, getting ready for kindergarten foundational skills, social skills. And those little kids stayed together throughout their three hours in the morning and three and a half hours, and really, it was super successful. The next section is just, just shows the weekly newsletter that I would send home with various reminders and updates and photos. I had fifty student mentors that helped various classes, which was up like twelve-ish from last year. They were amazing, super responsible, really hard workers. They basically, they did anything that was asked of them. I had kids that were like fighting to get into the two kindergarten classes. They just, so many of them wanted to help those little kids. I had one that unfortunately had to leave after first session. He was committed for both, and he had something family-related that came up, and he sent the sweetest email, but then also left like plans about some of the students that he worked with, like strategies that he learned. It was very sweet. They like took it super seriously. I had another kid that was only signed up for the first session, and he loved it so much, he asked like, can I come back for session two? And I said, absolutely. So they just were, they just did a fantastic job. Arrival in the Smithville, because it was at the PC this year, the first couple days were a little bit more of a challenge just because it was a different space than the middle school, as well as the fact that we had a lot more students sign up. So with traffic patterns and arrival and finding name tags and hallway logistical things, after a couple days, it was a lot smoother, and then we got some pretty positive feedback. So that was great. You can go to the next. Here are just some different photos that show the kids in action with the booster classes, the academic pieces, as well as the enrichment classes. We had a bunch of classes that did the majority of their work outside. Unfortunately, the first week, we did have quite a bit of rain, so that put a little bit of in the product things, but they were super flexible and made it work in the indoor spaces. There's some outdoor action shots there. There's that, one of the high schoolers in the kindergarten, he like, he's amazing. Like he'll, he'll, he'll be a teacher, an amazing teacher if he wants to be. Just like loves, loves being with those kids. So these are our goals from last year. The red shows that we met the goal. So we were hoping to increase our teachers and courses offered. We added more teachers and increased the number of classes. We were hoping to enhance the registration process, which we did, creating an online version. We wanted to make it more equitable for all students with registering. We had social workers meet with families and help them get registered. Some, we had meetings, one-on-one meetings with the special education teachers, as well as getting the IEP and LANSs out to all of the parents that were going to be working with those students, so that when they started, they had a good idea about the students that they were going to be working with. And then we also increased the enrichment pay to decrease that gap between the booster classes and the enrichment. The only goal that we did not meet was increasing our middle school enrollment. So that will continue to be a goal for the future. And then some goals for next year would be to continue increasing courses, as well as teachers, streamlining the pickup process and the transportation. Just with, sometimes just got a little bit tricky with the plans changing every day and how can we help families so that it's a smoother process for everyone involved. And then, I did send out a survey, so for staff, just on different ideas and student, how they felt that they were supportive of students, scheduling, logistics, all of that. So we will look at the results from that survey to help make improvements for next year. And then, again, increasing the enrollment for middle school. And one other thing would be to develop a system to help with translations for families that don't speak English. And then this is just a little glimpse of some attendance information. Overall, we had four hundred and fifty-two students enrolled, which is up ninety-six from last year, so that's really great. And then you can just see some of the percentages. Kindergarten kickoff for session one, ninety-four. One of the classes was ninety-four percent attendance. Reading, third grade reading, fifth grade reading, eighty-four, eighty-one percent. And then the Trail Mix and the obstacle course, they had close to ninety percent. And then the slime, ninety-three percent. You can see the percentages on the right, so pretty good attendance overall. And then at the bottom is just a summary. So the K five attendance was eighty-five point three, and it's middle school, a little bit lower. And then at the end is just a little summary about our successful program, how it runs academic growth, was joyful experiences, creating a community where all students are supportive, inspired, and excited to learn, and they're our great mentors.
Well, I've just gotta say, you know, you put the right people in place, they can make wonderful things happen for kids. You have done an exceptional job, not just this summer, but in past summers. And you've hired some really amazing teachers. When you look at this list of people who've helped us out and to have that kind of attendance rate, when you're talking about reading and math for two hours each morning, means that the teachers are doing things to engage the kids. So kudos to you, kudos to our staff. By the way, I'll let you in on a little secret. Mrs. Harland is studying to become an administrator. And this is like having your own school, isn't it? You know, when you think about it, a school within a school, and you have been thoughtfully thinking about succession planning within the organization, finding talent to carry on the next tradition of excellence in our schools. And you're just a remarkable professional during the school year and then during the summer. When do you ever find time to relax?
Tonight.
Also at our Sale Academy these next couple of days too. Just, we're so fortunate to have you in our district. Thank you for all you do, especially that which goes unnoticed.
It's my pleasure.
How about questions for the honorable future principal, Harland?
I'm curious about the attendance, the, so the percentages are of students enrolled, right?
Correct.
And do we, so on the, on the reading and math, the booster and enrichment, do we get the students, all of the students enrolled that we want? Or do we find that we have some students that we target that don't enroll?
Can you answer one more time? Are you saying?
Are there students that we recommend or want to enroll for reading and math that don't or struggle to or can't come or?
Yes, and for various reasons, if they're traveling over the summer or they are committed to other activities, we don't get all of them. But I think we have, I don't know the percentage of kids that we invite that actually come, but I think it would be pretty high. But there's always going to be some that can't come for various reasons.
This will be an interesting trend to read next year as Act Twenty kicks in and the requirement of invitation for reading remediation. That's the part that makes me nervous about those families who won't send their kids to summer school. For us to be able to find alternative pathways to help their child reach grade level if they regress over the summer, and then you haven't spent a lot of time cooping with them in the fall. And, you know, you're talking about goals for next year. Not only offerings for increasing enrollment in the middle school, but then also encouraging higher attendance. That's sixty-six point two. Again, people are on vacation in certain pockets of time, but that might be something we try to.
We done a survey to middle schoolers to see like what they want to do. Because I like, I know my daughter and her friends, they haven't had enough to get to the library to play like Dungeons and Dragons, but I think if you were like, hey, let's go do this thing, it's not, no, they don't have it. So like, we surveyed that to see what they'd be interested in. We might be able to get more that way.
I also think that one of the biggest challenges, I know that I had, pre, when we had fun stuff for summer school, was transportation. We only have bus pickups at these specific spots, and if you are at work and you can't get your kid there, and I know it's hard, like, we can't run buses like we do during the school year, but if we even have like a way to hook parents up, like, hey, so-and-so down the street is also pretty there, kid. I don't know so-and-so, but you guys, like, you know where we all live. Like, could, could we, could you arrange carpool in some way? Or set up a message board for parents who are trying, so they can do it themselves? I know that's the one thing I, like, there are good times, like, yes, and you can't, like, don't have a way to get them there.
Yeah, there's, I wonder, we had the same issue too. That's reasons why we didn't send them some years because we just, we couldn't get them there.
Some years you can work it out, and some years you're like, or you can, and then you're like, well, I need it this week. But there's no chance for next week. So then you're like, do you sign it up? Is a week worth it? You know? Maybe, maybe not. It all depends.
Yeah, that is, that's kind of where my line of thought was going. Is that we're seeing a substantial number of kids that we invite and can't, that we've been able to figure out what those barriers are. Is it, is it something that is just purely logistical, like vacations? Or is it something more systematic that we can perhaps address?
The plus ninety-six, did that max us out again then in terms of what we could offer? I feel like we've run real close.
I think, I think it was pretty close. I, I wouldn't say a hundred percent, but I would say it was pretty close. Yeah, those classes were full.
I know we were always speculating. It seemed like, it seemed like that would be the case, but to have many more kids and have more slots, that's pretty neat.
Surprising to me.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much for all the work you did and all your helpers.
Yes, thank you.
So proud of you. Thank you. Right, thank you very much. Onto our committee reports. Start with building grounds, transportation. Tom?
Buildings and grounds, we met July twenty virtually. We got an update from Dave and his team. Buildings and grounds are fully staffed. Tony Beckwith, who works the night shift, will be retiring soon in this month, and he's been a long-term employee, so we wish him the best. We are on schedule to have all the buildings ready for the school year, which is good. A little ahead of schedule. Work has been done on the IC bus loop, summer teaming walls, and the high school parking lot numbers have been painted. Some other work that's been done include a sign for the bus garage, a school dust collector in the high school, a few hoods for the high school, and the high school gym doors. Once you guys, or once anyone is able to get inside there and see the beautiful new doors that have been put in, into the gym. On the transportation side, we're short on some drivers, which is a really uncomfortable area, but always looking for bus drivers. Our annual DOT inspection will happen August fifteenth by the state patrol. I'm sure our bus folks will have all the buses ready for that. Online registration for bus routes is happening now for scheduling and get all of that in place. And all the athletic requests are already in place for this fall, for the bus needs, for the, all the different sporting events and everything. The electric bus, the charger is fully functional now, and we're just waiting for the bus to get a couple of things, modifications that were needed. Once we get that bus, we'll be excited to use it. On the referendum side, the geothermal testing is done and is preceded down in the baseball field. A question was brought up about snow removal once that project begins. And we'll be in charge of areas that aren't under construction. we'll be in charge of areas that aren't under construction, and the construction contractors will be responsible for the snow in other areas. We talked a little briefly about ballers and what they might look like and wear. We talked a little bit about school signage and how it might affect neighbors. So we have to put some thoughtfulness into where and how they might be lit up, not to cause too much of distraction or a hindrance to the neighbors. And our, we have a referendum meeting with Bray, or not referendum meeting, but a Bray update meeting on August 8 at 10 a.m. And the next BGT meeting is August 25 at 4:30 virtually.
Great, thanks, Tom. Any questions about BGT? All right, appreciate it. Joel, finance?
So we met on July 22, and we just did a meeting just to go over the annual meeting booklet. Couple things, the owners have left the building and they seem to be happy, so we appreciate that. Obviously, we won't get the final report for a little while yet, so I'm sure there's a few questions coming in, various little things, but everything's sounding good there. As far as the annual meeting booklet is concerned, the continuation of a conservative budgeting process was definitely used this time around. These are, keep in mind, these are budgeted numbers. So for example, we spent a fair amount of time talking about the special education reimbursement and how we, how it was arrived, the percentage that was arrived at as opposed to the published percentage, because it's a some, I'm gonna get this wrong, subservient, not subsufficient, a payout on something like that. So we talked a fair amount about that. In addition, we talked a fair amount about the Title IX, or excuse me, the Title I funding and all the changes there and the impacts of that. So the budget has relatively moderate increases for this next year. In addition, when we look at mill rate and some of those kinds of things, which we'll see next week, you'll notice that there was a pretty conservative look at adjusted property values as well. So those are budgeted numbers with knowing half of the information, if even, with what we actually have. So, but again, the conservative look at it was, was pretty good. One of the most important things from a health perspective is it looks like we will be able to increase fund downs as a percentage of total budget. So we had seen that dip over the last, not really dip, we had seen it post-dip over the last little while. And then we're able to see that increase slightly, which is a significant measure of health for the district, so. Our next meeting is next Monday with everybody and anybody that wants to join us at the intermediate center for the, it's at the intermediate center, correct?
Right.
For the annual meeting, and that's it.
Great, thanks, Joel. Any questions for Joel about that? All right, appreciate it. Brian Johnson, you were kind enough to pitch it for just a year on staff.
So I would do this update. So there are two big things you approved a little bit earlier tonight. So we did, talked a lot about the town line policy as well as the at-risk plan. We also went through a yearly plan. So we went through each month, what are some goals that we have, what, where do we want to make sure we accomplish? We looked at the board's goals and objectives and made sure that they were kind of hit on the safety and wellness portions. Gave a safety update. The district was able to see a grant for paraprofessionals, kind of focusing on paraprofessionals within the district. So we were able to get the walking talkies. That was part of the safety task force that we wanted. So all of the buildings have the appropriate amount that they were hoping to have within their building, but also some bike-proof clothing. Kim and Weeps is going to come and provide some professional development and brain-based learning for all paraprofessionals the first week back at school. And also weighted blankets for students to kind of help with regulation strategies. And those were the kind of, that was our, that was a long meeting, but that was pretty fun. We met, let's see, July 21, and our next meeting is August 18. And that will be the yearly, or August is the yearly presentation from our SRO.
Excellent. Thanks, Brian. And Jessica shared some notes from Village Parks, Reckon, Forestry Committee that I'll pass upon to you all. It was not, not a ton from their July 22 meeting in terms of school issues, but just to share some of the highlights. Grundle Park new playground will be installed this month. They have new playground equipment for Grundle Foster Park. And then 2026 capital budget, and other, as well as some other park maintenance items. And Jessica also attended the Luckin Property Meeting, the second, big second community input meeting. There's two designs that are up for debate. The Perk Space, this is kind of the big news, caught my eyes, up to 45 acres. They'd been talking about 20 originally, so they've doubled that. And I'm remembering Grundle was somewhere in that region of nine or 10, just to give you an idea of the size that we're talking here. Both concepts have two soccer fields, two baseball fields, two football fields, playgrounds, shelters, walking paths, parking lots that can accommodate school buses. And at least one of the plans had land set aside for a future potential indoor sports facility. So those plans are on the community website. Great idea for a little bit. Check those out and vote on which one that you prefer. And then they'll discuss at the upcoming village board meeting. That was the extent of that report. All right, I want to move on to 6D, which was the School Finance 101 Board Training. I know that we had discussed this a little bit coming out of the Wasby Summer Symposium Clinic. And I had looked through, I'm sure that all of us have looked through a little bit, the summary of these, maybe kicked around, what we might be interested in dedicating time to as well. I had some thoughts coming out of it, but I'd love to hear just sort of immediate reactions from everyone. This lineup and what they find an effective use of our time in taking some or all of this finance 101 and how we might get together to discuss some of the, some of the findings that we have, learnings we have individually. If anyone had any key takeaways or just sort of like general thoughts on the whole program of courses?
I think there's some nice things that I think all of us can take out of snippets of different parts of it, especially the board's role in, in the financing of the schools. So I certainly would be open to taking some of these courses and discussing.
I agree with that, and I think through just being one of the newer members of the board, like, some of those, like Tom had said, the board role of student finance really stuck out to me as, you know, some of the basics.
I, when we first talked about it, I think I was a little ambivalent on, like, doing all of them as the board, like, using workshop time on all of them. But then the more I thought about it, the more I thought that I think our primary challenge in the years ahead is funding. And, and I'm really understanding, like, to a certain extent, there's some of this that we, a lot of this that we can control, but it'd be to our benefit to really understand where those levers are that we can and can influence others. And so I, you know, as far as how we go about it, I don't, you know, maybe it is like that we chunk it out and it's like, we all watch it on our own and then use workshop time to like recap and review. I think that's like in my initial vision, I was being like, oh, it seems kind of, I don't know that like we all come into a meeting and watch it together makes sense, but, but maybe we make better use of the time together to kind of recap and talk through some of these.
So how do you carry on the institutional side of this, right? Our board is going to change.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
So is this, does this become a requirement for a new board member to take this? I'm not opposed to that, I'm just wondering, because
Right.
The only way this is used to is if all board members have that basic knowledge.
I think that's actually kind of a good, I think that's.
I think you can take it like before you've actually started. I think until you've got a few meetings on your calendar, you're like, wow. But I think their brain would melt, like, you just think, what did that just give me something to? Because that's, it's about quick math, it's about three and a half hours. Nobody checked my math, but quick math, it's three and a half hours.
Sorry, I'm going to pull some.
I said. So.
Which is why I think you got to chunk it out.
Definitely chunk it out. And I think it's something somebody in like their first year should do.
Right.
But I think, like, yeah, you have to slow. Because one of my first meetings was a budget meeting, and I think I said, you're like, I don't know what the heck is happening. But at the same time, like, if I was to have to this, I don't know that I would have known any better.
Right.
It could scare people off.
When, when Dr. Salino and I pop on a call and just discuss the agenda and we were kind of playing different scenarios out and how this would work. And where I landed, and I was talking with him a little bit tonight, was the idea of watching independently and using our time together for discussion. There's a possibility that we could get Mike Berry to come in, be that person who can answer the questions for us either kind of, or look up virtually. And I haven't really thought through, you know, do you, do you watch all nine and come with that? Do we pick focus areas? So I'd like to continue that discussion a little bit, because I would think to your point that the, the items that are dealing specifically with board responsibilities probably ones where we might have the most questions or want to talk through. But Mike could put out these programs, was part of the videos I saw again, he was the one who presented at, at the Wasby Summer Symposium. He's great. And he, you know, you can ask him anything and he's got a perspective on it. So I think it'd be a pretty valuable time to set aside 30 or 45 minutes in one of the board jobs and just kind of, maybe identify a few areas ahead of time that we are like, hey, we're all really interested in learning a little bit more and talking a little bit more about this. If that appeals to people. I wonder if we should have the discussion internally first before we decide to have or feel that need to have an outside source. But usually, usually those aren't free, right? So if, if there's stuff that, or we can't come to a conclusion on, or if we feel like there's more questions, then maybe we need help.
Or like have just internal discussion about what we really may need, somebody to come in and kind of.
Have the topics that.
Work with us on.
Yeah. Potentially.
Or if we take our questions and send them to you, you can put them together and like, and I think it's like, okay, you know, six of seven of you asked this question.
Right.
And so, like, that might help too, because we could give that to him ahead of time. Because, you know, we like to, sometimes Robin Lee when we get in here, so it would keep us focused.
Yeah. It'd be helpful to the board if we were to give you back this document, this table, and create seven more columns, one for each of you to identify what would be the topics that you're most interested in. And then we can get a picture as to what would be the flow of the workflow in terms of what videos we watch, based upon your interests, but then also based upon, you know, Scott and I would be happy to also serve as that person too. Scott, doing it day to day, I teach the classic UW-Madison, so I mean, between the two of us, I think we could help you working through that. And maybe an opportunity for you to get to know Mike Berry. He's, he's the executive director of Waspo. Maybe it's a multifaceted approach. And then you can maybe establish a benchmark timeframe, like, when do we want to have these watched? And I'll watch them over a course of a weekend. They're, they're not bad. They're very engaging. Mike's a very engaging speaker. Maybe by January, time for our January workshop. Would that be helpful to you, so you can just get everyone's wishes down there? Yeah, that sounds crazy.
I also like the idea of the deadline, because if you're like, watch these before the workshop, and you don't tell me the date, the date for the workshop, I'm like, I can't, I don't watch, I forgot about.
Exactly. Exactly. Well, great. Thanks for being open to that. I didn't want to press forward on that unless I felt like there was some appetite for it on the board. It does sound like there is, we can have some pretty good discussions about that.
And I think to Joel's point, I think there is definitely value and it's definitely valid to maybe discuss going forward with the new members that come to board members.
Absolutely.
Because I will, in my career, I've done a lot of budgeting, but like, oh, budgeting, okay, I got this.
Right.
No, this is a lot different.
Totally different.
Right? So, yeah.
Good, good, good. That's great. Thanks, everybody. Move on to 6D, Information and App Vicency Report, Exploring Additional Revenue Streams. Aubrey Hanks?
Hi. Okay, so as you might have seen, we have secured more than $1.5 million in additional support, which is incredible. And notice that I said "we"? I cannot stress this enough. It is such a team labor of love. I would not be this far if I didn't have you all, for starters. The advertising glitch, who's mad and sponsorship guy, has been a cornerstone in our work. So thank you all for all of your time and effort. That was a lot of hours. It's fun to think back about two years ago when we started this whole process. And it's just snowballed from there, which is exciting. And then to all the staff who have helped on each of these points that I'm gonna showcase tonight. I haven't shown everything. I've just highlighted some of the heavy hitters tonight, but everything takes so much time. For example, Scott has spent so many hours with me on the backend, like with grants and things like that, either applications or all of those reports after you have the grant, and it takes a while. So jumping into this, we're gonna start with grants and tax credits. We talked pretty extensively about the School Emergency Response to Violence Grant, which is a CER grant. I've written out all of my acronyms so that I remember them all. And the School Safety Initiative Critical Incident Grant in relation to May 1st, which has been such a huge help from things ranging to crumbles care, to training for staff in how to help students recover from trauma. But what is really phenomenal about those two grants is that we were able to apply for an extension of one whole year to keep using those funds, which is amazing, because we were able to complete 100% of the things that we wanted to do, right? In that first year, but we didn't use all of the money. So now we are able to do that and complete other things that we wanted to do in alignment with our original grant. And we're also able to do something additional, which was to spend about four thou, or over 4,000 on an evidence-based trauma survey for students. So Brian had actually come to me and said, hey, we need to do this survey for students at middle school. We need to find about 4,000 plus. And we were able to do that with the CER grant, which was really nice. And the Department of Education is really accommodating in our application. So for example, something like that, you have to apply again to be able to use money for other ways. Speaking of Brian, I had the pleasure to work with him and Lee McConicle on the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drug Abuse Grant. Thanks to that grant, we're going to attend, or I shouldn't say we, but staff are going to attend Wisconsin Schools Social Work Association Conference for ATODA training. And the students will get to participate in the Sources of Strength Leadership Program, which we recognized from last year, which was super successful. We'll lift that funding for that again this year. And then they'll also get to participate in Youth Frontiers Retreat, which is a specifically for the Courage and Compass Retreats, which they've done in previous years, and it was a big request to come back. So that'll be really nice for students of a variety of ages. The electric school bus, how did we forget? Tom gave us a great recap on what still needs to be done. This was a really cool discovery process, because we don't, we're not taxable as a school district, but yet we can apply for tax credits. So that's just one of the main avenues that we've sourced out. That wasn't necessarily urgent on our radar, but thank you guys for letting us go for it. And again, more tax credits down the road for when, for example, for the charger that we have that's operational, we can now apply for that tax credit because it's operational. we have that's operational, we can now apply for that tax credit because it's operational. You heard about the cybersecurity grant that we were awarded that gave us those firewalls, which is super important to prevent any bad actors from accessing our critical data. But now we applied for phase two and that will hopefully, if we're accepted, let us improve our multi-factor authentication. So if you have logged into something for work, if you have to put in an extra code that you get to your phone that's texted to you or emails, that's multi-factor and that's really, really important. Endpoint Detection and Response, it's a similar idea concept, but it reaches your broader network, which is interesting. And then training that goes along with both of those, which will be fantastic. Again, folks like Will and his team, I got to work with them a lot in determining what they actually need and then sourcing vendors, things like that. Moving on to donations, just gonna pick out a few, but we've received many really considerate donations, so we can't thank the Curths enough, Weedman and Epic Free Group. They funded our Stadium Scoreboard, which in turn has Kickstarter, our sponsorship program, which is fantastic. I'll just highlight that we've made, our proceeds are 20,000 this year and anticipate the 25,000 next year with some, some fun updates that I can't speak up yet, but once they're signed on the dotted line, then I'll get to bring them up at next year, next year's information.
Name is wanting more.
Yeah. So we currently have six sponsors, that's Weedman, Upland Hills Health, Quartz, Vortex Optics, First Choice Dental and Lauer Construction. And then not only has it created another revenue stream for us, but if you've been to one of our football games last year, there was that amazing intro video that one of our students did and there's again another intro video this year. We're working on making sure that's ready to go for the regular survey. And then this has even helped us fundraise for the music department's London performance, or at least it will. We've been raised up twice, so fingers crossed for August 14th. That's at 7 o'clock, if anyone's locked down. We'll be, yes, minions, we'll be showcasing that soon, we just have to lock down if that isn't that minions.
We're pretty sure.
Pretty sure.
I could only pass two.
I thought you were gonna pass off this group.
We could get the accent down. The Curths have also provided us with funding towards our Safety Review Task Force initiatives. Shout out to the Safety Review Task Force. So you probably haven't heard anything about this funding since and that is because of we, because we use this funding as a cash match for our COPS grant funding opportunity. Again, it is super competitive, but we, based on the Matthew McConaughey Foundation, the Greenlight Grants Initiative, we had a good chance. So I'm not gonna, I'm keeping my fingers crossed, we'll know in September. But again, we won't want to spend any of that money until September when we know whether or not. So regardless, we're gonna still make updates to security, but this would potentially double our funds and our safety initiatives, which would be incredible.
You can let us know when Matthew McConaughey's coming.
Oh, that was all we're hearing. Yeah. This first is. And then Buck and Huggins donated about $18,000 worth of tickets to our families, which was really cool and a lot of labor of love to coordinate, but still 900 plus people have requested to attend this game, which was really neat. And the student who sang the National Anthem was one of our students. The family sent me an email afterwards saying like, this was the most incredible thing and such a lifetime memory, which is, oh, a tear trigger. So just happy to have the community support us in that way. Definitely a great belonging piece for us during the summer when we might not otherwise see our peers. Partnerships, moving on to that category, we talked a bit about that. Again, 25,000 projected in 2025 and 2026 school year. We have a lot of touchpoints with sponsors throughout the year and one of those is our press box tours, which they can check it out, push the buttons themselves, which is really neat and they, they just light up and they can see their own content. I try to make something ahead of time before they visit so that they're, they feel just the love from Mount Borum. And from Quartz, we got to hear that our sponsorship program is in alignment with much bigger organizations out there that they work with. So there are touchpoints and communications that we send out specifying that our return investment for them, they love it. So, and we've got similar responses from our other sponsors. So again, that word of mouth, like we talked about in our last information advocacy, advocacy report, we're talking too fast, is really important. All this is really cool, but none of, but on the topic of touchpoints, we live in a society where there, when, if there's no picture, it didn't happen. So in the social media realm, our outreach is so important and thanks to captivating our digital storytelling, like you've been talking about so well, our reach has grown dramatically from 153.2,000 to 379,000. Again, that's not followers, but it's reach, how many people are going to reach ads and things like that, which is phenomenal and that helps showcase to our sponsors and donors and things like that, our reach and the return on investment. Any questions?
Tell them about the new website that allows us to see who's coming in and looking at different links and what parts of the world they're wanting.
Okay, Google Analytics, love it. It's set up appropriately now, which is really cool. We tried to on our old website, there was something going wrong, we couldn't figure it out. We have it appropriately set up now and you can see exactly who's on what page and where they're from, like if they're from Milwaukee or they're visiting from the Madison area, it's all based on IP and your computer and all of that. But that would be fantastic in determining, okay, who's looking on what content, especially for donors and sponsors when we move into showcasing them also.
Well, there's one person who we have to recognize and that is Ms. Aubrey. She's very quick to recognize others, but it's your coordinating efforts, your organizational skills, your attention to detail that allows all of this to kind of come together and goodness, we're celebrating your two-year anniversary, if that coming up very soon and you can clearly see the ROI on this is just exceptional, truly remarkable. Thank you.
Thanks. This is Leo.
Thanks.
Thank you Aubrey.
All right, on to action, item 7C, second reading, provisions, policy number 361, education material selection. Sarah Strong.
Second reading, Dr. Strong.
It is the second reading. As Sarah comes down, she was able to present this for your consideration at the last meeting. Were there any additional, we've made the changes that you all had proposed? Are there other items that you think might be helpful for us to consider? Otherwise, we welcome a motion for your consideration. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom and a second by Leah. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Super job, Sarah. Thanks Sarah. Dr. Slano, I assume, I didn't see any other citizens come inside though. Sarah, ready to go there? Great, that's the end of our business for tonight. Just run through our next meetings coming up. I know that we mentioned a couple of times, just to settle the annual meeting again, that's on Monday, next Monday at 6:00 PM at the IC, we have safety and wellness coming up on August 18th, right in this room before our full board meeting, that same night at 6:30 and then building and grounds wrapping up the month. On Monday, the 25th at 4:30 virtually. Can I call for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Sarah, second by Leah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.